Good evening, everyone. If you can get in and take your seats, I'd appreciate it. We're going to try and keep this on time tonight.
So, past midnight?
No, we're aiming for nine o'clock, but if it strays a little, it'll depend on how concise some of our speakers can be today. Welcome to our special meeting of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority here tonight on Wednesday, January 6th. I am Julie Pierce. I am the Chair of the Transportation Authority. I would like to invite you all to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment. This is a time where members of our audience may comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. And since you're here, you're probably all interested in the major agenda items, but if there is anyone here that wants to speak to items not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and we will hear you now. All right? And if you want to speak on the items that are on tonight's agenda, we will hear those in order this evening with the agenda items, and we will call on you before the major discussion by the Board, so you can make your comments at that time. So, if you want to speak, fill out one of these speaker cards that are on the back table and give them to Denise, who is sitting right here, and she will get them to me. Okay? And please indicate the agenda item number that you prefer to speak on. That would be very helpful as we run the meeting tonight. So, I don't see anyone rushing to the microphone to speak under public comments, so we will close the public comment period. And we're going to -- the reason we're here tonight under item 1.1 is to discuss the development of a potential transportation expenditure plan for the Transportation Authority to potentially put on the ballot for November of 2016. I say that emphatically because no final decisions have been made. Some of that will depend on what happens in Sacramento. We know that the federal government has been helpful, and we will get a certain amount from there, but we don't know what's happening in Sacramento. We don't know whether measures are going to be on there, what other interests will come about, but we do know that we're all sitting in traffic. We're all getting no seats on BART, and it's just a mess out there, and we all know that we have had much longer commutes than we used to have when the entire public didn't seem to be working. So, we need to find ways to alleviate those problems. So, we have set up to have a series of special meetings to discuss and come to agreement, we hope, on the overall transportation challenges that we have, how we're going to meet those. We want to hear from all different perspectives presented by stakeholders, and they will be considered by the Authority throughout this process. Our stakeholders include, what I'll say, all the usual suspects with the various titles behind their name, as well as our cities, our regional transportation agencies, other transit agencies as well, and the general public who have weighed in phenomenally to our outreach process that we have had this year. So, as we go through the processes tonight, we're not necessarily expecting decisions tonight. We want to listen. We want to discuss. We want to hear what some of these ideas are, and we may not even give an opinion tonight on some of these things. Some people may have additional items they want to raise, but in order to be successful, we have to pull everyone's perspectives together into a plan that most of us can agree is the best possible compromise we can get to represent all of our various needs and get that consensus. So, we have to look at short-term issues. We have to lay out longer-term issues. We have to have everyone's support. And as we go through this process, I'm going to ask over and over again that we all respect the various opinions that are going to be expressed. This is the workshop kind of format where we're hoping everyone can feel safe to express their concerns and their wants and their ideas, however far-flung they may seem, so that nothing gets missed. Everybody gets heard. And that means we're also going to have to be very succinct in making our comments, or we will be here to midnight every single meeting, and that doesn't serve any of us well and probably doesn't actually advance our cause. We do need to come to consensus by July in order to move forward. Realistically, that's closer to the end of April, that we have to do that because we have to then send it out to all of our cities to get their feedback as their vote on it as well before we can bring it back to the Authority. So, I am going to turn this over to Ross Chittenden, our Deputy Director for Projects, and he's running the transportation expenditure plan process, and he's going to talk more about the process and the timeline.
All right. Thank you, Chair Pierce. One correction, I think the transportation expenditure process is running me right now, but we'll get through this. So, thank you, and I'll add just a couple of comments, and I'll take your advice to be succinct. So, just really, two things I want to reference are attachments to your staff report here. Attachment A is really an updated stakeholder diagram, so we want to keep communicating, and charity communicated that our primary sources of input are through the RTPCs, who have already responded, through the E-PAC and the public avenues that was mentioned by the Chair. With the public, well, I guess we go to attachment B as a abbreviated schedule, breaks down the rest of the process this year into these three phases, develop the draft TEP, circulate that for comment, revise, and then to go out with a proposed final TEP and solicit approval from the cities and the Board of Supervisors. So, one additional point that I don't think was mentioned by the Chair, we will have a couple of rounds of polling in there coinciding with the different drafts that we'll have with the TEP. And again, if we get through that process in July, we'll be back here and asking for your approval of that document and forwarding that to the Board of Supervisors to put on the ballot. A little more detail on how we'll work with folks. Again, the RTPCs did respond in August and have been anxiously waiting for us to engage them in the next steps. Hisham and I met yesterday with all RTPC managers, and with this abbreviated process and enhanced communication that, again, the Chair talked about with, or requested of you, we're going to ask for the RTPC managers to help us with that and ensure that we have information posted on each agenda. So, we're looking at that. We'll be attending all the monthly Public Managers Association meetings because they're very engaged, and we want to keep them engaged, and we'll be asking for their help as well to ensure that council agendas have an opportunity for you and the other members and the alternates of the Board to provide an update at the council levels. And of course, we'll continue to hear from BART and the transit operators as we develop our agenda. The E-PAC want to report some, I think, very positive progress, working with them, and you'll see that as we go through the agenda. We've had a number of what I think are very productive meetings with some of the members of E-PAC, and again, that'll form the basis of the agenda today, and we'll use that to form the future agendas as we work through the process. We have tentative dates for five or six E-PAC meetings, four of them really to help us in formulating proposals for the TEP, and then a couple to review the drafts, because we want to get their comment and input on the drafts as well. So, I think I will just add that to the comments from the Chair and turn it back over to the Chair to move on to the next item.
First, we would like to actually ask the Board to confirm this sort of process and schedule going forward, that we're all in agreement, we're all going to work hard to get us there and move the agenda along, commitment to being open and respectful of everybody and all that kind of thing. So, if we can have -- do we want that as a formal vote, actually?
But we've listed as an action item. I think it's really, we're looking for concurrence and consensus.
I'll be happy to vote that we adopt both the ways of working together and the proposed schedule and scope of that.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Tats and a second by Arne Ratch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that carries unanimously. Thank you very, very much. So, we will move this on to the next agenda item, which is 1.2, which is talking about the special meetings of the Authority Board, including the meeting guidelines, and I will turn that back to Ross.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And this is really a continuation on the item we just discussed and really focusing on our piece of the action. So, I'm going to do a real brief introduction on what we hope to accomplish and what we think you should expect over the next few meetings, and I'll introduce Ben Stromwasser, our facilitator for these meetings, as he'll walk through some of the logistics. So, part of what you've heard from the Chair already and of what we've proposed here is really just a different way of conducting our meetings. This is really intended for these first meetings to be a facilitated discussion, which is really a lot different than what we normally do. Normally, you're going to hear a presentation, Chair will ask for a public comment, get your comments, we have a little bit of discussion, come to a conclusion and wrap things up. So, again, we view this as being really a continuum building from one meeting to the next meeting, and we're proposing that the use of a formal facilitator in that process is something that'll benefit all of us. And it's really, what got us to this place, I think, are really different expectations from different stakeholders, and we're trying to react to that and keep the process moving. Some folks, I think, they put in their input and expected you to rubber stamp and put it on the ballot, and that's what led us to have a proposed plan that's 165% of the available funding, so we have to deal with that. Others, we're looking for really a true bottoms-up process where we work with all stakeholders to come to a consensus point before we come back to you, and we really just don't have time to do that. And others are really, are looking to staff and the consultants with your input to put out a proposal and then work off that, just shoot at that, make tweaks to that, and I think what we have here is kind of a hybrid of all that. So, as we've discussed at the prior meetings, we had what was probably more of a sequential process of getting input from the RTPCs and E-PAC and bringing it to you, so we're going to be doing a lot of things concurrently. And with the time allotted, we think that these current activities, particularly a lot of the discussions at E-PAC and at the RTPCs, would benefit from your initial feedback. So, that's really what we're looking for out of these first few meetings, as the Chair has said, just your input and feedback. I think we'll recognize the appropriate time when we start moving into the need to make decisions. Some of those decisions, we expect, will be just your concurrence on consensus positions that we bring in, and others, we may not arrive at consensus with the stakeholders, and then you're going to have to make the decisions on which directions you go. But we really recognize that's getting your engagement. I know many of you, you've all wanted to jump in, you've been very patient. We're going to give you the time now to start weighing in and providing your comments in a thoughtful manner that keeps everybody at the table, we think will be very, very appropriate and very important in working through this abbreviated process. So, I'd like to now just turn it over to Ben. Ben Stromwasser, introduce Ben, and he'll walk you through some more of the logistics. And again, we're just going to ask--
Excuse me, just one second. We have a question?
Yes. I just want to be clear. In terms of the stakeholders, have we identified who all those stakeholders are, and will there be opportunities for those stakeholders to work together prior to coming back? I'm just not clear, Astor.
Yeah, well, certainly the stakeholder group that we have asked the most of and have the biggest level of engagement now is the E-PAC group, so we want to provide them opportunity to work to bring in some thoughts to you and get your thoughts, and we'll continue to work on building consensus that way. But there's a much broader stakeholder group that we do need to also start engaging. So, that, one of the things that we'll hear from Ben, or I could say it right now, is we want to produce a summary of this meeting and each of these special meetings in the morning after the meeting. So, tomorrow morning, and tomorrow will be particularly important in that there's the Mayor's Conference tomorrow night. We'll have a summary that we'd like you to share with your colleagues, whether it's on the Board or the other stakeholders that you work with. We want to keep you informed. This is meeting every other week, we're essentially twice a month, so it's every two or three weeks we're going to be meeting. In between those meetings, we're going to have two or three meetings of the E-PAC. There's going to be a lot of activity, so we want to set up a communication process that's very close to real time. And again, we all need to work within the stakeholder group that we live in. So, staff and our consulting team will be working with E-PAC and the other stakeholders we work with, and we'd ask you to work with your colleagues similarly.
Okay. I could appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we are absolutely transparent and that we make sure that there are perimeters around the discussion that they have, because we have a very tight timeframe, and they need to know that, you know, we're limited in the things that we're going to be able to do, and so they need to stay on point in terms of the discussion, so when it does come back to us, we're able to make those type of decisions. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I want to get that out there from one Board member that is saying, as you go forward, the stakeholder group, that you need to be very serious about where we're going with this.
Yeah, and a couple of observations. I can't speak on behalf of everybody, but a couple of very positive points is we still have a lot of people who are very interested in being engaged. There's, folks are fighting to make this happen, what it is and what's included in it, and how we operate over a 25-year period or whatever the period is for the sales tax. There are many different views on that, but people want to, people are engaged and want to see it happen, and they're going to advocate for their position, and we're going to have to work through some of those hard decisions. And we see, we've had a number of these small group meetings with different members of the E-PAC. We're identifying many areas of commonality. It's how do we make it happen? It's the what, there's a lot of agreement, commonality. It's how we make it happen is where we're going to have to have some of the more difficult discussions. So, I think it's great comments, appreciate it, and I think everyone I've heard is on board with that, is we need to figure out very quickly if we can make it happen this round, and if not, how do we build for success in the future. So, a lot of committed people involved.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Federal. Okay, and you want to go ahead and introduce Ben? We're happy to have you here.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Is this working? I have a mic on here. Yeah, is that loud enough? Good. Well, welcome, and thanks for the opportunity to try to assist you here. I've done a lot of facilitation over the years. I live quite nearby, so this is all of interest to me. I just want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the meeting guidelines, some of the expectations that we have for this meeting, and then get into the presentations and the information. Sometimes for groups like this, meeting guidelines seem a little, not inappropriate, but we've been there and done that. So, but I need to have this, and I think we need to have this as a group, so we can contribute to our success for this effort. So, one is to commit to constructive input and participation, and that's very important, one, and one that we hope people take to heart. Obviously, speaking one at a time and not interrupting is a good way to communicate with one another, and actively listening to one another, and that means not thinking about what you want to say next, but listening to the person who's talking. It's been brought up many times that we have a relatively short period of time to get all the work done and to build agreement and consensus with a large group of people. So, it behooves us to listen carefully to one another and identify areas where we can find agreement. Staying on topic and being succinct has been brought up, but we'll hope that everybody can do that. Certainly maintaining an open mind. We can't get anywhere, and this was discussed by the group, if people put lines in the sand at the very beginning. We really have to take the opportunity to listen and to identify areas where we can get agreement and maintain an open mind. And also take responsibility for having a successful meetings in these special meetings that we're having. And finally, it's always fun when the phones don't go off. Sometimes it's mine. The other areas are going to be talked to, talked about, the potential topic areas, and you'll have an opportunity to add to those. The questions I'm going to be asking and wanting you to think about are, are there any other topic areas in addition to the ones that we've identified so far that should be put into consideration? Are there ones where you think there's some agreement already, or we're headed in the direction of agreement already, and then are there ones that are ones that we really have to do more work on? So, that and identifying themes that come out of our discussion and identifying the topic areas that we want to discuss for future meetings is what we want to get tonight. That's kind of in a nutshell. So, I'll sit down. We'll start the presentations shortly, and then we'll have an opportunity to go through some comments and then have our discussion between the Board and the presenters.
Thank you, Ben. So, everybody understands sort of our guidelines, and remember, we're not coming to conclusions definitely tonight. We are having a discussion and hearing a couple of different perspectives from parts of our community. So, let's move on to item 1.3, and I'm going to have Ross kick that one off.
Thank you, Chair Pierce. Yeah, I'd like to make a few introductory comments, and then I'll introduce our speakers here. The first will be Joel Delvin Court from the Green Belt Alliance. I know many of you know Joel. I think you know, we've asked him to participate in the E-PAC, and he's been attending our meetings over the last few months and has made a series of comments. A little background, Joel, and members of the coalition that you see in the documents started to come together really before we even formed the E-PAC, and at least my personal observation is I think they strengthened as a coalition during the time of the E-PAC and maybe even strengthened a little bit more when we took our hiatus in October and November, and that gets back to some of the comments I made in response to Supervisor Glover, and a lot of folks are committed, and they're working to help make this happen even when we weren't there. So, really appreciate that. Joel attended our October meeting and distributed a two-page document called the Community Vision, and that's the same document, maybe reordered a little bit as included with the document you have there today. As we started to reengage the E-PAC after our discussions in November and December, we asked that Joel and his coalition work off that document to put some more definition and to provide some more detail on some of the position and policy points that were referenced in the vision document. They took on that challenge and produced what was distributed to you yesterday, and we have a copy of that on the DS tonight, if you didn't get a chance to review that. Along the way, we invited other members of E-PAC to review the document and provide their perspective. So, some of what you read here tonight has that input, and probably more of that is towards tone and how the document reads, a little bit more than substance, but you'll hear from that when Kristin Connolly gets up to make her comments as well. Couple of observations that, and comments I'd like to make, I would like to just take the time to personally thank Joel and Ron Brown, who's with us as well, and other members of the coalition for developing the document. This is, from my perspective, it misses some of the points that I know you're going to want to talk about, but it really highlights and frames a good, is a good framework for the discussion that we need to have. So, it's something, I think it's something we really wanted to pull out of our earlier meetings from E-PAC. Again, we've talked a lot about that, and we weren't able to do that, and what this does is it gives us this, again, I'll call it a framework, just a way to start talking about these issues. So, again, I really, really appreciate that. So, again, we really want to provide the opportunity just to introduce the document, focus more right now about the topics. Are these the right topics that we need to consider as we go through the process? Certainly, you can start to give us some of your input in terms of the options that are identified for these topics. I've been using the word "policy topics" and then "options." So, what are the things we need to talk about, and how do we ultimately want to decide them? That's really the framework that we're talking about with that paper and with the items that Ben mentioned during his discussion. So, we've gone through that. We're all in the right frame of mind to start our discussion, so I'd like to bring up Joel Delvin Court and allow him to make his presentation.
Yes, yes, I do have visual aids for you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all, Commissioners, for being here in the new year and for hearing our coalition this evening provide our community vision and some of our transformational policies. And I'll keep this as succinct as I have in my talking points, but I hope that I can also take time to really allow some deep level of thought on some of these things, and also, if you need me to slow down, just let me know. And, you know, just to start off, I am here on behalf of a growing coalition of environmental labor, transportation, housing, social justice, faith, civic, and other public interest groups representing Contra Costa voters, and I'm here to bring forward our transformational vision for Contra Costa, which is the document you probably have seen right here, also included with transformative policies as well. And we believe this is an exciting time for Contra Costa. Our county is building on significant leadership over the last 30 years, which makes it less daunting to address the challenges of the next 30 years. We all know we need to take a big step, but it is incumbent upon us to work together to get there. The vision and policies we provided you with today are transformational, and we are eager to help our institutions make advances along the way. Our county is in a time of great change, and this is an opportunity to recalibrate our priorities and collaboratively achieve a thriving Contra Costa. We live in a spectacular county with Mount Diablo, 1.1 million people, and a wonderful quality of life, but challenges to get people from home to work and back are real. The vision and policy document you have today covers many issues, and over the next few study sessions, hopefully all of those will be covered, including more in depth on some of the topics that we'll discuss this evening. But tonight, I will focus on three major issues, primarily the bedrock connection between transportation, land use, and growth management, and offer our recommendations on these critical areas. Smart growth, conservation, and transportation are inextricably linked in Contra Costa, and that began with Measure C in 1988. As you'll see here, with Measure C, Contra Costa became the first county in the state to plan and invest in transportation, land use, and growth management together. The growth management program was a key component and led to voter approval of the county urban limit line in 1990 with another one called Measure C, not to be confused. Measure J in 2004 enhanced those urban limit lines and created the Transportation for Livable Communities Program, which further cemented the connection between transportation investments and infill development. Both of these came from coalitions of stakeholders, along with the leadership from Commissioners and a whole host of wonderful, committed people throughout the county to arrive at the first in the state programs of this kind. Voters have strongly favored these policies, as well as their enhancements-- Voters have strongly favored these policies, as well as their enhancement, and the sales tax would provide an opportunity to build upon our success to reach transformational change in how we plan, invest, as well as grow. So what does the future hold in the second generation of this link between these? Let's start with the context that Contra Costa fits within. I'll give a brief overview of the opportunities and challenges relating to these three areas, and then we'll dig a little bit deeper into each of them. With transportation, as Chair Pierce has already said this evening, we know that there is ever-increasing traffic. We also have an aging transit system that needs the right investments to be world-class and transformational as well. New climate regulations from the state, such as SB 375, offer new ways to adapt and become more resilient to change in Contra Costa. We also see a major shift at Caltrans. There is now the acknowledgement that when you build more highway lanes, you actually sit in traffic more. We have outgrown the era of "build it and you will go faster." A new measure gives us the resourceful and strategic opportunities to do short-term and long-term improvements across the entire transportation spectrum to accommodate all users and the needs of Contra Costa's diverse communities. In regards to housing and land use, housing costs are rising at an alarming speed. I think everyone has heard the term "housing crisis." This creates a pressing demand for new homes and jobs within our cities and towns, where residents and employees of all incomes have access to safe and convenient transit, walking and biking options. What's amazing is, as the demand grows, so too are people and employers increasingly attracted to living in compact and transit-accessible communities, and city centers are growing faster than suburban and rural ones. These are the thriving, walkable places where people can live, work, and play. We've heard that many times. And our county also has priority development areas, where we invest in numerous plans, as well as development projects that will create homes, jobs, and safe connections to transit to our jobs. And then there's big news for growth management. The Bay Area is expected to grow by more than 2 million people through 2040. Fortunately, extensive analysis shows that we can accommodate all of that growth within existing cities and towns, and I'll show more information on that later in my slideshow. This is good news, since old development patterns have wrought enormous impacts, particularly on Contra Costa. Locally, it increases congestion, increases greenhouse gases, strains our city budgets. It also makes us lose our farmland, depletes our water resources, and carve up our natural lands, impacts that would need to be analyzed before we make investments. This is a slide provided from BART, has two different pieces of information, and really, the point here is that mass transit is making it easier for commuters across Contra Costa, regardless of what you're doing. BART carries nearly as many people through the Caldecott Tunnel during peak hours as drive through the tunnel. And guess what? As you can see on this slide, without BART in full operation, traffic skyrockets. The graph on the right there is when you don't have BART, and the traffic quintuples. And the reality is that we have an aging transit system that requires critical investment, or the entire Central and East County will be in gridlock. It is also critical to make our existing system perform at its best, providing high-quality competitive transit options that are accessible to thriving communities will carry greater ridership, alleviating traffic for those who choose to drive, and provide the opportunities to grow responsibly in the right places. Our platform recommends the following policies to help tackle these problems together. First, we have investing in our transit system for peak performance in operations. This is about prioritizing fix-it-first strategies, just as called for by BART leadership and transit professionals throughout the region. We have to ensure that we close gaps in bus service and invest in key routes and priority development areas to get our bus system performing at its best. And quite frankly, it's astounding how hard it is to get people from West County to Martinez, even for basic health services. We need a mobility management system for fully accessible transit. This is critical to make sure we have accessible service for all riders in our county. And we need to create an affordable transit option program. In particular, one such is the innovative West County program, which I think has been around for some time and has done well. We also need to invest in walkable, bikeable transit connections, so that people can get safely and conveniently to transit. This process has already begun in Contra Costa, but we still have a long way to go to make it safe to get to and from transit. So you might wonder, we have all of these things already, and people still decide to drive. Well, in order to make that function better, we need to double down on our transit investments, and we need to look at how land use connections and where people live affect this. Building homes and priority development areas near transit is a major component to making all of this system work. It is the key to our success in Contra Costa, and this is the real challenge of the measure, and we acknowledge that. The map you see here shows all of the housing opportunity sites in the entire county of Contra Costa, identified by all of the county's jurisdictions. It's all the blue stuff. Fortunately, you get a little bit more blue distinction in your visuals than the audience does. Years of planning have clearly demonstrated that we have enough room within our existing urban footprint to accommodate 100% of future growth through 2040. This means all growth will be infill development or within existing urban limit lines. We want to make it easier to develop within our existing cities and towns, and there are many reasons for this. Living within a half-mile of transit dramatically reduces the dependence on cars. Building homes for all income levels near transit stations is now hailed as an environmental success and also keeps pressure off our natural and agricultural lands. Compact development makes economic sense. It increases the ease of access to local businesses, and employers are located in areas that are walkable and attractive to our growing workforce, and we see that throughout the entire region. The control is still within each community to make the right decisions and investments to strategically grow and create thriving communities while reducing traffic pressure. The challenge to implement this is within each of our jurisdictions, and that's why a 30-year timeframe is so important here, that we know how we can adapt to time as we go through it. These opportunity states are real places for investment. Over the last 10 years, many of these ideas advanced into new communities and new job centers. And this is a picture from Contra Costa Center when it was a vacant parking lot. Throughout Contra Costa, BART stations are often overparked and underutilized, and parcels that could be amazing places for people to live, work, and play are left vacant. In this picture, you see an example of how to transform an empty parking lot into a thriving, walkable street, although not all of the things here happened. This was one of the ideas that came out for Contra Costa Center. And through incentives and plannings for growth in PDAs, we see the right kind of compact development happening near transit stations. The last decade gave us the perspective on Generation 1, you might call some of this Generation 1, on transit-oriented development. What's the right mix of housing, safe streets, jobs, and parks? And we're still working that out. And now we're working on Generation 2, building on successes and continue to make our first efforts even better. This includes investing in areas that are growing and prioritizing our investments to places that continue to support communities for people of all incomes. These are also areas where we can make streets safer for families and commuters. Several places in Contra Costa are implementing complete street upgrades, which you will hear more about in future special sessions. All over the county jurisdictions have also created plans around transit stations. These are just a few smattering of the ones that have either been around just recently or about to pass. Years of public involvement and support for the right development in the right places, the best ways to take advantage of choices for transportation, better bus service, better access to BART, and bike routes for commuting and for pleasure. These plans allowed for the public to give input, and now it's about making PDA investments to the level of success where they can start changing commuting behavior. This is about the holistic vision of transportation and land use, and we can achieve these at the local level. We now have an amazing group of plans, and now we need to figure out how we grow in the right places with these. So these are some of the policies that we are bringing forward in order to incentivize infill development in Contra Costa. First, we have an innovative TOD fund, similar to the One Bay Area Grant Program. This competitive program would focus transportation investments in the best places for development. We have ensure housing element compliance to focus growth at opportunity sites. What this really does, and when we think of housing elements, what it does is gives us an inventory of where to build in the right places, and it's a real key, as you could see from the map that we provided. It's a key to see where we can do things, where we can do things right. We need to make sure that we have sufficient housing density around new transit stations to ensure their success. Transit and ridership and housing density are all interrelated, and we need to make it successful in order to get people off the highways. We also need to reward communities that are creating homes for people of all incomes. Additional transportation dollars will go to places that are creating these new communities, and we need to do this so that we can prevent some of the next short-term housing crises that are guaranteed to happen in the Bay Area again. And some folks have also been working on an anti-displacement program. Supervisor Joya has bringing forward some of those policy ideas, and we look forward to seeing more of that come out of MTC as well. And it's really important to make sure that we don't lose people even more, who are some of more marginalized people around transit stations. But what happens when we don't get the infill right? When it's easier to sprawl out than contain our thriving communities near transit? If we are not able to contain our growth, we will continue to end up in the catastrophic jams throughout the county. And these are just, it's a little whirlwind picture, so you can just get extra overwhelmed by it. We will continue to see land use patterns that we can't afford, that we can't sustain, and it stresses the transportation for us all. There's actually a great deal of overlap between stakeholders on this issue. We've heard during the E-PAC process that many builders would prefer to build within our existing cities and towns. They are looking for incentives to make it easier to do so. It requires a reminder that Contra Costa underwent a tremendous amount of sprawl over the last several decades, leading to many of these things that we experience today. And the threat of more sprawl persists. Contra Costa has the most at-risk land of the nine Bay Area counties, totaling more than 18,000 acres, or the equivalent of 18 Golden Gate Parks. And threats to farmland in Contra Costa are particularly acute. Just in the last few decades, we have lost 20% of our farmland to sprawl. Speculation of farmland drives up the cost of that land, it reduces productivity, and undermines the viability of agriculture and threatens some of the best farmland in the entire state. Despite these challenges, Contra Costa has also stepped up by investing tremendous resources into our natural working lands in Contra Costa. Agriculture alone has $100 million impact on our economy. It's a place that gives us fresh local food. Brentwood corn is sold all over the country, and these are the places where we take our families to hike, to play, as well as to savor local wine and to pick cherries. And I cannot go through a single presentation without saying we should all have a meeting at Viana Winery, because it's my favorite in Contra Costa. And there are ever-evolving benefits for protecting our natural and agricultural land, and those include capturing carbon, as well as rainwater. Of course, during the drought, we all were talking about that, and we're capturing it now, and we hope that we can do something good with that water. And so from there, we expect the next sales tax to build on what we've already found in our growth management policies of the last two times we've done this. We expect that enhancing our urban limit lines will close some of the dangerous loopholes that allow for speculation of our farmland in particular, as well as ranches and open spaces. We hope to see a prohibition of sprawl-inducing projects that would reduce our quality of life, would create more congestion, and ultimately lead us down the same path that we are in today. We'd like to see that there is insurance of agricultural protections, since these are Contra Costa's most vulnerable lands. And we'd like to establish new growth management program standards that draw on the successes of many of the jurisdictions in Contra Costa that already do some. Some of those are hillside protection ordinances, ridgeline protection ordinances. A lot of creative, innovative work has come out of the county, and we hope to see more of that. And so it is with the synergy of incentivizing infill, protecting against sprawl, and proactively conserving important lands, that Contra Costa will continue to lead in the quality of life, traffic relief, and demonstrate our unique role in shaping transportation plans and the region as a whole. Tonight, we have covered the three top of these issues, and these are some of the future special sessions topics that we'd like to discuss with you, which also come out of our policy paper and vision document. And ultimately, our policies will help to create the transformational Contra Costa that we need and that we're looking for to get over the next 30 years. And I look forward to our discussion this evening and just leave you here with our current endorsement list, which has increased by more than 50% over the last 24 hours. So pretty exciting. And again, thank you all for listening. I'm looking forward to our discussion and also to these other presentations.
Great. Thank you, Joel. Our next speaker we wanted to call up is Kristin Connolly, Executive Director from the East Bay Leadership Council. I'd direct you to handout on your DS here. Kristin provided a letter addressed to Chair Pierce this afternoon. We weren't able to distribute it prior to the meeting, but we do have it in your packet. So she may make reference to that in her comments.
Madam Chair, I did have a question. Are we going to be able to ask questions of the PowerPoint? Because there were several things raised in there, or is that going to be...
That's going to be part of the facilitated discussion, and Ben is going to lead us through. So.
Great. Thank you, Chair Pierce and commissioners. Thank you, Ross, for distributing the letter that I got you this morning. My apologies for not getting it to you sooner. I wanted to join Ross's comments in acknowledging the great work by Joel and by Ron Brown in terms of, and the whole coalition in putting that together. Many of the members of the East Bay Leadership Council are among the signatories and endorsers of that list, and also, it's been a privilege to serve on the E-PAC with so many members of the East Bay Leadership Council, among the 29, including representatives of the Hospitals Association, the East Bay Regional Park District, Save Mount Diablo, the Rehabilitation Centers of Northern California. So from lots of different perspectives. And I just want to acknowledge, too, the significant time that the authority staff have invested in coming to our transportation task force on a regular basis to inform our discussions internally about all of this. So I would acknowledge that there are many, many components of the community vision that Joel just talked about that we have embraced and that are a part of this. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read from the letter that I submitted. You can do that on your own, and I want to make sure we get to the facilitated conversation. But I do want to also acknowledge two other representatives of significant member organizations who've been a part of this conversation from the business perspective, and that's Lisa Vorderbruggen from the BIA of the Bay Area, who's here and probably going to give some public comment, and also Michael Cunningham from the Bay Area Council. Michael couldn't be here this evening, but I did want to just acknowledge that they too, in addition to the E-PAC, have been working in additional, smaller conversations to move this forward in a productive manner and find places of common ground. Because as you very well know, in order to be successful, we have to get to near-unanimous support. Getting to 2/3 on a tax measure, which is an actual increase to the sales tax above and beyond what we already have, will be a tough feat, and we need to come together with something very successful. And what I wanted to emphasize is that it's, we really look at it as we need to improve the transportation system, and we need to be able to win. And in order to do that, we need to be really thoughtful about what we put together. So I did want to just acknowledge some of the areas where we do agree. I was asked to respond to the comments. So certainly, we agree that it's important to build on the significant leadership that Contra Costa has shown in terms of growth management, and that, but that everything that we do here happens in the context of what's happened in California and what's happening in the Bay Area, and that there are significant growth pressures. And we also agree that transportation, land use, and growth management are inextricably linked. We need to be really thoughtful about what we do there. And growing by more than 2 million people by 2040 in the Bay Area is something that we do need to tackle in this measure. And so I wanted to, I did want to ask, though, in terms of thinking about some of the, actually just to highlight, you know, being fully accessible to transit for all populations, that's something that's really important, so I'm glad that that's called out in the vision document, and to, you know, acknowledge the significant benefits to all of us of the protected open space. So there's lots of, there is lots of shared, you know, things that we certainly agree with in the document. You know, some of the, and I did, in just, in the interest of time, to get to some of the areas where, as Ross put it, there's lots of agreement about the what and less agreement about the how. And so that's what, you know, on this very tight timeframe that Commissioner Glover talked about and that we're going to need to adhere to, we need to get to sorting out some of those differences. So, you know, we do have some serious concerns about some of the proposals that are percolating up around anti-displacement efforts, because there's some concern that some of the proposals that are being forwarded at MTC and other places are actually, there is no evidence to demonstrate that they are helping in that regard. I mean, many of you probably saw the LA Times editorial this morning separately on affordable housing, that there was, you know, an opinion piece about how often requirements on affordable housing can actually have the opposite effect and actually really depress housing development. But I just, so I just wanted to acknowledge that a lot of the, there is some disagreement about the hows. And I wanted to just point out, and I'm going to borrow some language and some points from my colleague, Michael Cunningham, in terms of looking at the importance of traffic. You know, this too is a concern to both Bay Area Council members, East Bay Leadership Council members, but we'd say it's not just the result of current land use planning, but past planning, and inadequate production of housing and insufficient investment in the transportation system. So, and while we are strongly, strongly, strongly supporting infill development in priority development areas, we are skeptical that that alone will solve our problem. And so it's not going to make up for the underinvestment in the transportation system. So please keep that in mind. And with respect to the investments in the transit system and thinking about how to really help people get from here to there, to all the places that they need to go, our members would strongly agree that it's important to get, you know, to really change the paradigm of people in the single occupancy vehicle, but I think it's important to think about ways that we can be creative and not spend money on systems that perhaps are not as efficient as they should be, because what works in terms of buses in an urban environment is very different than what might work in the suburbs. It's important to be thinking... It's important to be thinking about how to serve every, all people of all abilities. But I want to think about perhaps making investments that the authority can retain some funds and be nimble in terms of how to get, how to change that paradigm. And we might not, we might not, we might want to really think about, you know, changing the status quo and what that might look like. Happy to talk about that more further. And then, in thinking about job creation, I think it's important to make investments that will encourage businesses again to start here and to expand here, to locate here if they're somewhere else. You know, we hear it from all of our members of all different sizes about getting, you know, transportation for the workforce is incredibly important across all sectors. So, in terms of quality local jobs, you know, it's important to think about not just the transportation investments supporting, you know, that will create great jobs, those, you know, in fact, you know, the construction jobs related to that, but it's important to think about how these investments will support a strong economy that create jobs that allows workers to get to those jobs. And then, and finally, in thinking about growing in the right places and not the wrong places, you know, it's important, you know, I want to acknowledge that there's some frustration about how this is played out. And we recognize that all the local jurisdictions are all very different, and so, we want to be really creative about how we approach this. It's not, Contra Costa, it's not going to be enough to just build large towers in urban environments. That's not going to meet the housing need. We need to significantly increase production as our local electeds, I think you know that well. But that'll be something that we hopefully talk about a lot. So, I think I will leave it there. There's more to be said. Again, I didn't want to read the letter that I submitted, but it did talk about some of the four priorities in terms of investing, fully investing in a plan for supporting the, sort of the Diablo loop because of where those job centers are, making some significant investments in 680 along the, and more improvements in the East County Corridor connecting Eastern Contra Costa with Eastern Alameda, as well as along the 80 corridor. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristin. We appreciate the comments here. I think I'm going to call next on our staff members, Ross, Bill, and Eric from our consultant team, to come up and make a few comments. After that, I am going to go to public comment on this discussion item. So, if you want to make comments, please get your cards in now so that we have you lined up and ready to speak after the staff and consultant team make their comments. That will be followed by the facilitated discussion of the presenters and the Authority Board. Okay? Ross?
All right. Thank you, Chair Pierce. Again, I just want to, not to steal any of Ben's job here, but I did want to just provide a few observations and a couple of questions. I think that we want to, can help us start our discussion here, and I know Bill has a few things he wants to say as well. So, again, I really appreciate Joel and Kristin coming and making their comments. As Kristin said, we asked her to comment on the letter, and she came in, and it wasn't a point, counterpoint. That's not what we were looking for. I think what we got was a lot of complimentary comments that maybe together form the basis of what we need to talk about. So, again, it gets back to our comments earlier with Supervisor Glover. We've got a lot of folks that are, let's figure out a way to find common ground, and when we're not there yet, let's talk about it in a thoughtful manner. So, we have that. Couple of the consistent agreement points we've heard from our stakeholders as we met over the last few weeks and kind of repeating a little bit what Joel and Kristin have said. It's, you know, this production of adequate housing, it's drawn economy, good jobs. We really need that. It's critical to accommodate the projected population growth here. We're looking at a growth of over 25% between now and 2040. So, that's a lot of folks that exceeds our natural population growth. So, people are going to be moving in. Where do we put those folks? So, we need to accommodate that growth. And our role here with the Authority is how do we provide an efficient, affordable, equitable, and environmentally sensitive transportation solutions? I think that's kind of summed up a lot of that. Related to the development, a nice saying we heard the other day, I'd like to repeat, building within the urban limit line is good, building within PDAs is better. But we know that PDAs don't work everywhere. And then, some are going to question whether the land use changes alone are going to solve our transportation challenges. So, really, to think about this balance. So, the couple of questions related to that is, you know, how do we strike this balance so we're not resulting in more sprawl and the reliance on single occupant vehicles? And that's really a lot of what Joel was talking about. And then, more directly is, you know, how do we find those linkages that are appropriate in a transportation sales tax measure that are going to address this jobs and housing? So, that's part of the transformational discussion here is, what are the things that we can do within a transportation measure, not only to address the current problems that, some of those highlighted by Kristin with the congestion and reliable transit and so forth, but how can we take it? Or what's the appropriate things to add into a measure that meets some of these other issues that we've been talking about? Another item touched on by Kristin and something we talk about here at the Authority is the role of the future of technology in delivering those mobility services. Just like land use changes being an incremental change, that it can start small and have big results over time, we think that the emergence of the technology and some of the things we're doing here can both solve some of the current challenges that we have. But we think over the 25 years or whatever term is of the measure, that things are going to be very, very different. So, how do we take advantage of that for today's challenges? And how do we build in flexibility, as Kristin mentioned, so that we can adapt over time as these technologies change? And then, the other part, I won't say, really highlighted by Kristin was, we need to invest in addressing the solutions that we have today. So, part of how I think we should interpret, and I hope Joel agrees with this, is the Community Vision Document, is they're looking for really addressing a lot of policy changes on how we plan and using a portion of the potential proceeds from a transportation tax to directly invest in accommodating growth in the right areas and then also as incentives for growth. We'll debate both of those, but my point is, is they're not suggesting that all the money needs to go into that type of a solution. So, there is, if we are successful in enacting a tax, there will be significant resources to address today's problems, and we need to be very thoughtful and strategic in how we do that so we don't recreate some of the, some of the problems that exist today. So, with that, I'll just turn it over to Bill. I think he has a few other...
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Just a few overviews. I think one of the things that Ross and I talked about yesterday that really struck home with me is that when we start listening to all of this and talking, there's really three kind of areas here. It's, we have transportation needs, which are successive, and we can put all the money into that. You know, we could put three times this amount we're talking about in here and not solve all the problems. And that's a reality. But the other reality is the policies that go along with it. This county has led the state in terms of developing, you know, transportation and growth management, starting in 1988, and Joel went through that adequately. And then, in 2004, we introduced this whole concept of urban limit lines. And, you know, those were stressful discussions when they happened, but frankly, they've worked well. When we reflect back on the regional committees and the dialogues going on in the communities, that's all good. So, I think one of the things that I see is that evolving those policies and making them a little stronger and better is a good opportunity here. And frankly, it's necessary for the consensus that we need around this. We're not saying, I mentioned it already, and Ross has mentioned it, the whole transportation problem. And then, the technology issue, which really translates into flexibility. We need an ability, and this is a challenge in a community where we need a 2/3 vote at the end of the day. And how technology and flexibility to accommodate what, a future that we don't even understand, really. We don't really know where we're going to be in 20 years, but it's very clear with autonomous vehicles and connected vehicles and all this, it's going to be different. And to do a 25- or 30-year measure without the flexibility is going to be a difficult thing. So, all of these are inputs. We always have to remember that the 2/3 vote requirement, right or wrong, it's very, very difficult to get, you know, a consensus plan. And that's why it's so difficult and so much of a challenge, but it's an opportunity to get the consensus of a group like EPAC, of the regional transportation planning committees, of the public managers representing the cities. All of that is necessary, the transit operators, and it's all part of that process. So, as much as a lot of us would like to just focus on making, providing more money for transportation, land use and transportation are linked. We know that, and we, a lot of the stuff that Joel said in terms of the reasons for the congestion is true. As we, even Caltrans and everybody else are realizing, we can't build our way out of the problem. So, we have to be creative with it. So, with that, I think I'll just let Ben and the group start the dialogue, because this is a great opportunity, and I just encourage everybody to keep an open mind, because it's, and we'll come back at some point, Ross and I and the staff, with some recommendations on how we might accomplish some of these ideas. But the difficult challenge is the how, not so much, I think there's general agreement on the problems, but the, how do we build that into a transportation measure is the challenge.
Thank you, Bill. As I mentioned before, this is your opportunity to make public comment on this agenda item. I have one card up here. Denise has a few, but if you want to comment, we would like to hear from you before Ben starts the facilitated dialogue between the presenters and the Authority members. So, I will go to my first card, which is from Kenji Yamada, who will be followed by Debbie Toth and Joel Ramos. So, Kenji, you're up first.
Good evening, Chair Pierce, Authority Board members, and members of staff. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Kenji Yamada, and I'm here on behalf of Bike Concord, an organization of a few hundred Concord and Central Contra Costa residents working for safe, convenient bicycling in our community. We are one of the signatory organizations on the community vision, which you've just heard about. Although Bike Concord is focused on bicycle transportation, we are glad to be part of this coalition for a healthy, efficient, all-inclusive transportation future in Contra Costa. The community vision provides a framework, as Ross pointed out, for policies and expenditures that will lead our county out of harmful, costly cycles. Induced demand is the cycle from which Bike Concord is most focused on extricating our community, the cycle of expanding motor infrastructure, followed by increased motor traffic to fill it. There are other such cycles around housing and employment. I want to thank Joel de Valcourt for his work in gathering input from all the different organizations represented. It has brought diverse concerns into a consistent, shared vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenji. Next up is Debbie Toth, followed by Joel Ramos, followed by Lisa Vorderbruggen. Those are all of the cards that I have. So, if you want to speak as a public comment under this agenda item, get your cards in now. Thanks. Debbie?
Good evening, Chair Pierce and Commissioners and staff. I'm so excited to see Supervisor Glover here. I know you're a Commissioner tonight, whatever, but welcome to the new year, you know? I want to, first and foremost, comment on how uniquely different this is from Measure C process turned Measure J, as referenced earlier. The goal at this point is finding common ground, and that's unique to this process. I don't think that's where we started last go-around. And so, it feels incredibly different. And I'm hearing again and again and again, mobility management and accessible transportation for everybody. I think we often take for granted that we can get to our physician, to the pharmacy, to groceries, to our jobs, and keeping that in mind at all times as we plan is absolutely paramount. And I also just want to say that staff also at CCTA is a whole different ballgame this go-around. And one of the things Randy's been a trailblazer in leading us with is a different perspective for leveraging funds. And I think I'll speak on behalf of our sort of section of this, which is accessible transportation, and Elaine Welch, who's not here tonight, who's the Executive Director of Mobility Matters. We are excited to utilize this opportunity to leverage other kinds of funding, even I was talking to Ross about tonight, through the Affordable Care Act. So, we're going to be able to come up with new funding streams by doing something like this. And I think that it's incumbent upon all of us who are looking at this from a sort of perspective or lens for the people that we serve, that it's important that we look at how we can leverage money as a result of this process. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Debbie. Next speaker is Joel Ramos, to be followed by Lisa Vorderbruggen, and I saw another card come in, so there will be somebody after that.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Joel Ramos, coming from Transform. I'm also one of the privileged folks that were asked to sit on the EPAC and participated in a lot of the work that Joel de Valcourt has been facilitating along. Transform is coming from the perspective of having helped in the past with Measure J. We helped with Measure BB in Alameda County and Measure A in San Francisco. We've got a regional lens, and we see the tremendous opportunity importance of this opportunity here. I'm a son of Contra Costa County. I was in Bart this morning, and I ran into my niece, who lives in Oakley. She, I asked her if she could be here tonight, because she depends on transit in Bart. She said she couldn't because she has to get up at 5:00 tomorrow morning to get to San Francisco by 8:00 for her class, because she's transit-dependent. And the point that I want to make here is really expressly the importance of transit and recognizing that, yes, Oakley, Concord, Bay Point, where I grew up, Walla Creek, these places are different. They're not urban, but they certainly have a need for transit. Transit ridership is certainly growing. And while we are super supportive of innovation, you know, there's all these fantastic autonomous vehicle models and everything else, we are supportive of that, but certainly not at the expense of the basic need of transit and getting lots of, you know, people that are going to the same place at the same time in the most efficient way possible. All this innovation with these rideshare companies, for example, is flooding the streets of San Francisco right now. They're not sharing their data, because they're all private, and they don't want to disclose the data, and people are saying there's less traffic, but others would say and swear to it, yes, the taxi drivers, they'll swear that there's actually more traffic now because of these autonomous vehicles, that's all about the innovation. I want to make sure that we understand that that has an impact on transit. And when transit is slow, because it's either stuck in traffic, or it doesn't come frequently enough, you know, like every 15 minutes, or it doesn't come late enough into the evening, people don't ride it. And that's when you have these empty buses. And those aren't the kinds of transit systems we're talking about supplementing and augmenting. But what we are calling for is more rapid transit that gets to places faster by way of innovative concepts like traffic signal priority and holding the signal light green when the bus comes up on it. I know you know all about these strategies, but they're things that we can fund through this, and we can get more people on transit and off of our highways. We also know that affordability is a major concern that we've been talking to people about in the past. Students getting to school, seniors, as they get older and they become more fixed in their income, they're thinking about how they're going to be able to continue to afford to get around as well. So, making sure that transit is affordable, reliable, dependable, it's efficient, and most of all, it's a competitive mode. Right now, it's not competitive. Most people who are riding the bus are riding the bus because they don't have any other choice. If they had a choice, they wouldn't subject themselves to the hour waits or having to run to get to that last bus before it leaves, because if they miss it, they're going to be stuck having to call a cab. So, I just really want to emphasize the need for, the importance of transit in this alongside with any kind of innovation. Again, we don't want to butt heads with anyone. We don't want to fight over this. But we do feel that transit needs to be right up at the front of your considerations, and we've sat through all of this. We continue to hope to be able to participate with you in the future, leveraging the constituents' voices that we're trying to make sure are represented here. I will remind you that a sales tax is most heavily felt by people who are lower income. It's a whole lot more difficult for somebody to spend $10 on tax on $100 if they only make $100 a week than somebody who's making, you know, $1,000 that week to pay $100, or $10 bucks. You know what I mean. So, thank you very much, all of you. We know you are super busy. We know that you could be anywhere tonight, and we know that you've got all kinds of incredible obligations. I'm deeply grateful for all of your service. As someone who grew up, when AC Transit used to get me from my home in West Pittsburgh at the time, now Bay Point, out to, all the way to school at the time, and somebody who still respects... still respects all of this wonderful county, I sincerely thank you for all of your service and look forward to the conversation heading, getting us to a place where we can win in the future. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Vorderbruggen, followed by Rita Xavier, and that is my last card.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Vorderbruggen, and I represent the Building Industry Association. Our members build the houses that we all live in, and those of your children and grandchildren to come, hopefully they'll all get to live close, as I am lucky to have mine do. As a participant in this process and as a member of the E-PAC, there have been moments of frustration and there have been moments of joy. Well, maybe not quite joy. Yes, yes, less frustration. But I will say that I am encouraged about the progress that has been made, primarily over the holidays. Some folks were working harder over Christmas, Joel in particular and Ron Brown, than some of the rest of us on this process, that we are going to make some progress going forward. As you might imagine, there are components contained within the plan that the environmental and the coalition has put forward tonight that our members would not be excited about. But we are keeping an open mind moving forward, hoping to get on the other side of a plan that our members, while they may not agree with every piece of it, that they will at least be able to agree that the whole is greater than perhaps some of the distaste of some of the parts. That's probably a very bad way to put that, but...
And you're a writer.
I know, I know. What can I say? What can I say? I'll have to go back and rewrite that sentence later.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Count on Lisa for a moment of levity. Rita Xavier is our last speaker.
Yes, Rita Xavier from E-PAC, the Paratransit Coordinating Council. And also, among other things, I'm chair of the San Pablo Planning Commission, so I'm very involved in land use, building, all of that. But I wanted to emphasize what Joel said in his presentation about the problems in public transit getting from West County to certain places in the county. We can get to Walnut Creek, okay, I got here that way. But Martinez is very difficult. And I'm sure it's the same problem for people in East County getting to certain places. So that's a very important part of it, is the public transit. And as Oal also said, the same thing. Public transit is really important. I'm a non-driver. I haven't driven since '89, so I know what people face. Thanks.
Thank you so much. That was our last speaker card. We thank you all for your comments. And now we are going to turn this discussion over to Ben to facilitate it. Remember, this is basically a workshop-type format. We're going to take turns and be nice and brainstorm and listen attentively and all those good things that Ben has up on that meeting guidelines sheet, which you might be able to read from where you sit. But you all know how to play nice, and that's what we're going to do. And we're going to hopefully come up with some great ideas as we go through this discussion tonight. So Ben, I wouldn't worry about whether that sticks or not. If you haven't turned off your cell phone yet, that's what the bottom one says. Turn it off right now.
Ivy's going to be our scribe.
That's why the charts are a little lower than they might be. Ivy and I have the same challenge. But we will move them up as they get filled up, so...
I think we just violated one of the rules.
No, I just called out somebody who's just like me, which is wonderful. So thank you very much. And Ben, are you ready?
I am ready.
All right. It's all yours.
Excellent. Okay. So we have, hopefully you got a good basis for discussion from the presentations and discussion and response and observations. What we want to do now is take some time, and I just created some areas of discussion for, to put some structure around this discussion, because we can go all over the place very quickly. First off, the areas of, the potential topic areas for the community vision were talked about, and I think Joel in his presentation showed a very similar list of topic areas that have been discussed so far, including growth management, advanced mitigation programs, incentives for infill development, anti-displacement, accountability measures and taxpayer protections, bikeway and complete streets programs, mobility management, accessible service, equity and social justice, and then finally the expenditure plan itself. So those are some of the potential areas of discussion. And a lot of the focus has been on the first ones, the growth management area, which is sort of the basis for a lot of the discussion, at least that's what we've found so far. So what I wanted to try to do is, do we have a target now for trying to get out of here? 9:00?
We'd prefer 9:00 if we can do it.
Okay, let's go for it. So I wanted to start out and get questions and comments about clarification or further explanation from what was presented by Joel and others, and then take some time to talk about that. Then take some time to talk about additional topic areas that would be important to include in this growing community vision document and program, growing both in its description of things and in the people who are prepared to support it. And then, to the extent that we can, find some areas of agreement, just not for the purposes of voting on them tonight, but for the purposes of seeing where we have some agreement and some foundation for working with all the stakeholders to support some of these topic areas. And then areas, of course, where we need more discussion. And then when we're getting towards 9:00, I want to stop a little early and highlight the main themes that we've heard, and then get from you the topics that you want to see as part of future special meeting events. And what I will do is just go by raise of hands. We don't need to do it any more formally than that. And then Ivy's going to help us out here on some of the basic comments that we've got, and we're doing more detailed notes as well. So if we can start with clarification or further explanation for, yes?
Okay. I'm looking at the PowerPoint that was presented by Joel. I can do some stuff offline. On the incentivizing infill, sometimes I look at statements, and it makes me think that we're not doing that or there's a problem. So on the third bullet point, it says sufficient housing density around new transit stations to ensure investment success. So what I need further information on is what are new transit stations in Contra Costa County? Because at the Pleasant Hill, at the Walnut Creek, at the Bay Point, there are, we've got those kind of projects going. So I'm not sure if that means as E-BART goes further east, if that's what some of that is talking about. So I need clarification on that for future. On the strengthening growth management slide, I think the urban limit lines have worked very, very well. So I'm not sure, I would need to know, what I want to know are what the problems have been, as opposed to statements that we need to do this, we need to do that. Why? I want to know why. What hasn't worked in the current plan? So in the second bullet point, it says prohibit sprawl-inducing projects. I need examples of what those are, because I'm not sure that I've seen sprawl-inducing projects. Ensure agricultural protections. My recollection is the county has, the county unincorporated area. And I know from reading the document, you were also talking, or they were also talking about cities. But we want to ensure agricultural protections, but we need to weigh that or balance that against private property rights. I heard something that some of those lands have been turned into, have been sold for non-agricultural purposes, but that's because people want to sell their property. And so I get that maybe from this tax measure, there could be money to incentivize them not to sell that, but I need more information on that. And then again, establish new growth management program standards. I want to know what they are. What's not working in the current growth management standards? Because again, I'm not seeing that. And then back to earlier, there was a map of infill and several things. Here it is. Hold on. We saw the blue was developed land for infill sites, but there were red splotches. And so I'd like to know what the red splotches mean, and I'd like to know what the yellow area means. And then the Concord Naval Weapons Station, even though it's referenced later on, is not, I'm just trying to figure out if the map means that that's not an infill project, that it would be a new project. It's infill and new because it's a lot of acreage, but, so it's not, doesn't fit the description of infill per se, but yet it's a place where we can put a lot of housing. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that from this map, that is still seen as an area where there will be development of housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to respond just briefly to any of the comments here? Joel or...
I'm Joel.
Yeah. If we could just sort of...
I will keep it very succinct.
Hit some of the...
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And thank you, Supervisor Mitchoff. Those are great questions. Many of them covered in the policy document itself. So particularly around the growth management standards, the why, which, what areas are covered in that area. So for... Yeah, exactly. So just letting you know, when you dig a little bit deeper into that section in particular, there is some of it, and I would be happy to cover further questions.
Well, I'm looking at four. It says establish new growth management program standards. Again, it doesn't answer the question...
No, no, no. Under the actual, this document here.
That's what I'm looking at. Okay, maybe it's the first page.
So the, it lists seven or eight different things.
That's what I'm looking at. The bullet points, hillside ordinance.
Yes, correction.
Yeah. That tells me what you want. It doesn't tell me where the problems have been.
Oh, I see what you mean.
That's what I want.
Okay. Great. Yeah, and we can cover that offline, because I don't want to, I don't want to pull out particular projects that may...
I want it for the entire group.
Okay, well, I mean, I can certainly...
No, we're not going to go into it tonight.
Okay.
I think he wants to keep us rolling.
Areas for further...
Gotcha.
And then in terms of this map right here, it was simplified. There are several other data points that are different types of land within the urban limit line. The red splotches are ungraded land. We wanted, just for the clarity of this presentation, to have you focus on the blue. But there are other layers in here that are important, that we can spend some more time on, because we've produced just a map.
Just provide an updated map.
Absolutely. And then the yellow is the agricultural core.
Or legend, yeah.
Yeah, it has an extended legend. We just wanted to clarify for the purpose of this presentation. And the yellow is the agricultural area of the county.
Thanks, Joel. Don?
Great, thank you. Well, Juan, thanks for, take all of you who took the time to put this together. On this topic, I suffer from the problem of being retired. I had most of today to go over the detailed document. And I don't even want to begin to list my questions because there are three pages of them. So what I'm really interested in is thinking through what's our process going to be to feed questions back, and then so we can all get the answers. Because Janet's going to have good questions that I didn't think of, as will Newell and everybody else. So, and we don't have the time to get into all the questions that will come up this evening. So my point is, I think we need a process to sort of think through this and ask our questions and get feedback.
How to get responses. Okay. Please.
Maybe a high-level view. First of all, it's kind of exciting to see some familiar faces sitting here, at least the organizations I think all of us know really well, some new faces and some new ideas. High-level view, it seems to me that this might not have been vetted through the E-PAC. Is that correct? Joel's presentation.
Yeah, so you're absolutely correct.
It's okay, because I'm going to make a comment. So that concerns me. And I just think with all, and the reason why I say we know all of you, you all know us real well. And it feels a little bit like maybe that wasn't working well, so you're coming to us. And by the way, we want to talk about this, because we haven't been able to talk about this. So this is a great opportunity for us. But it seems that we should try to honor that process. It's, E-PAC was put together with everybody that had an interest, and it would seem that this should be vetted there, and it should emanate from that and not be, and I don't think anybody meant it that way, but it seems to be it's coming around the side, and there are groups like Kristen saying, yeah, we kind of support the idea, but boy, the details are the problem. I would hope that that's what the E-PAC does. And I think, I think all of us were expecting these, this to come from them, and then we'd have a discussion. This is a portion of that group that's come to us and said, here it is. So I like most of the ideas, but the details I have some issues with. And I also want to make sure we're focused on who we are. You know, we can't solve a lot of other problems and use this as a backdoor to get to those. And that's a concern. And I understand that's the way it is. But there needs to be a clear nexus between what's going to be in the transportation plan, multimodal and all of that, but there needs to be a nexus to why there's a criteria. We can't rewrite state law. We can't rewrite the general plans of all the cities. And we also want to make sure that we carefully don't, we had two cities last time. I chaired the South area on, South County on urban limit line. It went well, except for one South city. And as you all know, there was one in the East County that almost blew the whole deal up. That still could happen. That could still happen because there are certain things that people are trying to go backwards to grab things that happened in the past in tri-cycle. I just say, I'd be cautioned about that, and I don't want us to get into that. So I have a little concern that this has come to us in a different way than we expected. And all of a sudden, if we just start focusing on this as though this is the solution, these are wonderful ideas, but it really needs to get our input, and needs the E-PAC to have input. And make it a truly a document and a series of ideas, because I don't think all those ideas are going to go through easily. I think some are going to go through with unanimous agreement. And I also, Mr. Ramos was here, he made a really good point that I think we should all remember. We all say we're for transit, we're for transit. Bus system in Contra Costa County, largely in this side of the hill, doesn't work.
Right.
And we've got to fix it. They're empty buses. We need to figure out how to fix it and quit throwing money at a problem without understanding why doesn't it work. And he highlighted some really, really good points. And I hope that's a, that's a deep-level discussion just on that. How do we fix our buses? It's because BART's full. We need to still help BART maintain what it has, but the fact is, is you can't, you can't put any more people in BART at this point in time. And Joel, I just wanted to make a nice comment. I don't think you meant to say it, but when you were showing the Caldecott Tunnel and the 8,000 BART riders and the 9,000 something, you said traffics, there are four times as many people around. I think you mean the delay is four times as small. I just, if that was written, go back and look at it, because somebody's going to say, oh, that's wrong, bad idea. It's, yeah, it makes it impossible to get through there, but it's still, it's an 80% increase in people, not cars. So, but I really like this, but I really want to make a nice suggestion, and I think we all ought to support that. Just go back to the E-PAC, they start to crunch this, come back with it, and meanwhile, we can get our questions answered, and we'll have fun.
Isn't that our intention?
Yeah. My phone's not...
Oh, go. It is now.
Okay, great. Thank you. So apparently we didn't set it up with explaining that intention, but that is exactly the intention. So we wanted to daylight this, and again, I know the document doesn't contain everything we want to see, and it's not where we're ultimately going to land, but it's something that came forward, and we want to use it again as this discussion framework. So as we talked about last meeting, we're having these series of meetings with representatives of E- of E-PAC. We've had several over the holidays. We have another one planned for next week. I'm sure that'll lead to another. A lot of what happens next is dependent on what happens in the meeting we're sitting in right now. It's just very fluid and dynamic, but we don't want to leave you with the statement of intent that we're bringing this all for you to decide. We're introducing this to you. We want to get some initial comments, get some clarification that you needed, but it's going right back to the groups that we're working with, and we'll be taking it to E-PAC in our next meeting that's the end of the month. So yeah, we're trying to work this through a couple of parallel paths. The other, we touched on a little bit, is we're going to be asking our TPCs to look at it and provide some input too. So we're transitioning with, based on the time, from this sequential process to this parallel process right now. So sorry if you interpreted it that way, that we're bringing it here without having full vetting of our stakeholders, but that is our intent, that we do that. And you will hear in future meetings where we have the points of consensus and other areas where we may get stuck, and we need to talk about it up here.
Other...
Yeah, please.
I wasn't going to say anything, but for those who know me, that's almost impossible. Obviously, I'm from Far East County, and you know, I really, each... Something hit me tonight when somebody stated it. Each city, each region has their own significant things that affect them, like for the bike coalition. Wonderful ideas. It'd be tough for Brentwood to bike to Pittsburgh to pick up a BART car. You look at, you look at what really transpires out here, transit stations. We're praying to God we get one in 20 years. It'd be tough for us to build around a transit station that we don't have. Seriously. And just for information, which I thought was pretty cool, I looked it up. Brentwood's approaching 58,000 people. The only way we can basically get somewhere is by vehicle. I've been out there 44 years, and I'm now 50. So the population of Antioch's 100,000. If anybody's ever driven, I'm going to have to come back here tomorrow. I will leave Brentwood at 6:15 to get here by 8:30. So I think what, I kind of agree with him. I don't think tonight, we all have our issues. I've got my issues. I could tell you what's going on in Brentwood, what's going on in East County, I'm sure. My counterpart over here from Oakley, we could tell you Clayton has, good Lord, if you were caught in Clayton, how do you get down Ignatia Valley? I got caught. I thought life was wonderful until I had to get to San Ramon and Danville one morning. Highway, people are crazy. I don't know how in the hell we're going to do it. But the ideas, we all have to give a little bit. Lisa, I know you're a writer, and, well, maybe we're a long time ago, but we... I think you said it very eloquently, and I'll shut up. I see you getting ready to stand up.
No, thank you. Give us some... I just want to make sure we stick to our guidelines.
Those aren't guidelines? Okay. I'm done. I did want to say this. We also have to be respectful of the people that are going to build, because that, we also have a shortage of housing, so people have a place to live. So it's a huge network, and I agree with my counterpart here. Lot of discussion, and it needs to be brought back and vetted.
Thank you. Other points on clarification or further explanation?
Do you want me to go next? Okay. Yeah. The one thing that I'm confused about in a way is that in the presentations I heard, and maybe it's just because I just didn't catch it or something, but there's a thing that I would loosely call local transit. So people are talking about it's hard to get to a point from here to a point that's, say, 30 miles away, or some, you know, distance even longer than that. But if you want to go to the store to get a loaf of bread or milk, the types of transit that's needed to do that isn't, doesn't seem to be much of, isn't being, isn't much of the conversation yet. And that's really, to me, as a transit-dependent person, what matters more than anything. You know, if I need to go to the store and get some milk, I, you know, that's a lot more important than, on a day-to-day basis, than anything else, you know, than anything that's 30 miles away, unless I happen to have a job, which I don't. And the, and a lot of people who use transit don't have jobs too. So, you know, so getting to the store, being able to get to the local things, I kind of, are kind of missing, I believe, from a lot of this. So this, to me, is kind of about regional travel, from my point of view. And I'd like it to be about local, you know, include the importance of local travel and include the truly transit-dependent person who does not get in a taxi to do something. I don't fit in a taxi even, so I'll never be that person. But the other thing that I remembered, and I just wanted to bring it up, because I thought it was pretty important in Measure J, and that was that we talked about our, as Bob was saying actually, our regional differences, and how we should sort of, there's a level at which we should agree to disagree. And so if I in West County need it a certain way, and there's lots of me like, you know, let's say in West County, and then in East County, there's lots of people like Bob, then we need to like base what we're doing on that and work together. And I think that's a really helpful way to think about it, I really do, because it brings us together overall, and it will help us pass a measure, more than anything, I think, when we can say it's okay to be different. So I just want to leave it at that, because I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. But we did do that last time, and I think it was really helpful to think about it that way. And, but then I have to put in a plug for BART, and at least Gail's on my side on that one, right? We didn't talk much at all about BART and all of the needs of BART, and they are really some serious needs. And so many people, as we're shown in the charts, do use that system, that we can't just sort of let it go, and, you know, and I just wanted to add that as an important thing to, you know, put in that category. That's all.
Any others?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks. So it's interesting. I really appreciate the fact that we're here and we're starting to have some of the broader, harder conversations that need to be had. Appreciate the work that went into the documents that we've seen today, and the comments of my colleagues up here, because I agree with an awful lot of what's been said. But to the paper that you're talking about, which is the clarification, further explanation piece, I find myself trying to sort through the question of what it is that we're actually here to try to solve in the long term. And because I think at the end of the day, to get past sort of broad statements of interest or delight, we have to at least come to some clear understandings. And I think that those items that we might need to have some clear understandings about are, what's actually the clear statement of the problem that we'd be trying to solve with a new transportation measure or sales tax measure? Unless we have that, it seems to me that it's really, really hard to get to a majority view, forget even about a consensus. But I don't know that we have an agreement even on sort of the basics of that. And so I'm wondering from a process standpoint, how we kind of move toward that. So that's sort of part one on sort of clarification, further explanation. The second one is, we ripped through pretty quickly the concept of the process that we're going to use. I'm not sure that I could repeat it or articulate it to anybody, whether that be people in my city or people on my city council. And so I think we have to have a little bit more clarification or articulation of the process that we're looking to go through to get from here to wherever it is that we're trying to go. So that's the second. The third thing that I think we need to spend some time clarifying and getting some further explanation on is what success looks like, what a solution looks like to the problem that we've defined and articulated. Because while I think it's really important and useful that we have the hard conversations, unless we have, if you will, some sorts of foundational components of agreement about what potential solutions look like, then it feels like we're setting ourselves up to spend an awful lot of time that we can all spend in other places in other ways. And that doesn't feel healthy to me. That actually feels dysfunctional. And so I think we need some more clarity and structure around those three pieces. And then the fourth piece, which I think is ultimately most critical to us getting to a place where we could, you know, have enough people satisfied that we could go to the public with a measure, is that we have to have an ability to articulate a clear and convincing rationale for each set of actions that we would look to take. And I agree specifically with, you know, some of the comments that Janet made on this, which is, the notion of one-size-fits-all, I think, ultimately fails in this county. We've seen that time and time again. And so I think we have to be able to articulate on a sub-regional level what those, you know, clear and convincing rationales are for each of the actions that we'd be looking to within each of the regions. So maybe that branch is over, if you will, into additional topic areas, but for me, I just, I don't know where we go from here without part of that being more clear.
Did you want to speak to that in the chart that we have, or the process chart? It's not graphic, actually. That's the one. Yeah.
Well, okay, so Ben's referring to Attachment B on page 1.1.6. So, you know, this is a very high-level process chart.
Ross, is that something we can put up on the screen so everybody can see?
It would be nice, but I don't know that we can.
No, I have it. I just want to make sure that...
Oh.
Yeah. Ross, is that B of 1.2?
1.1. 1.1. It's page 1.1, point, 1.1-6 of your packet.
PDF. It's probably a PDF. Well, maybe you can just speak to it. There it is.
Ben?
Yes.
Well, we're looking for that. Commissioner Glover has a...
Please, go ahead.
You know, I appreciate all the questions. I'm just as concerned about having the answers to those questions. But I think if I understand what the staff is looking to do, is to get those questions tonight, to be able to go back and to work through those, also what goes on at E-PAC as they presented to E-PAC, and in a meeting that it's taking all the concerns from this body and the E-PAC body to maybe try to come back. Ross, I hope that I'm not throwing it way down the road and dismantling it, but that's the thought that I had. So the questions are good questions.
Yes.
But the answers don't reside here tonight, and that you're going to go out and you're going to bring that back and try to find some consensus with E-PAC on some of those prior to bringing them back. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, certainly, we articulated it there. That is our intent. I think Commissioner Durant brought up a couple of other points that we haven't necessarily built into our thought process, and we need to do that. In Joel's presentation, I think he did provide some suggestion as to the problem we're trying to solve, and there it's, you know, figuring out how we, more of the opportunity using these dollars to change how and where we develop, and to try to build a infrastructure, a transportation infrastructure to support that. So, you know, I think that's a fundamental question we do need to wrestle with a little bit with E-PAC, and ultimately, I think we're going to have to, as a body here, endorse that, because it's something, you know, we've started in the discussions on the Countywide Transportation Plan. We haven't quite finished that yet. But I think the points that I'm hearing here are, we have a lot of stuff that's been presented, and we need to distill it down and be a little more succinct, and build it into some simplified statements that we can articulate to the public, because it's ultimately the public. It's no single person in this room that's going to make this happen, so...
Absolutely. And again, I think that there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of work that's now going to take place in these quarters, but the questions need to come out so that we know the work that needs to be done for you to go out and do. One of the things I do want to just also say is that when we talk about the process that we followed last time, you know, we had great participation from the sub-regions. And I think that, aren't they a part of E-PAC also?
No, but let me address that a little bit, because I did skip over that earlier. The sub-regions, again, they provided their input back in August, and that was primarily, with a few exceptions, that was primarily recommendation on how we invest the dollars. So one could interpret that everything, all the policies that exist in Measure J would remain in place, and we would expend dollars in different ways to accomplish certain things. What we're seeing from Joel's group and a lot of folks on E-PAC are, you know, we also need to think about the policies that are going to drive how we make those investments. So we have a recommendation on investments. We have a suggestion on some policy changes and a use of a certain amount of the dollars to incentivize, invest directly, et cetera, to meet certain goals. So the thought here is we're going to work through some of these policy discussions with E-PAC, with input through the regional committees, with some of your input, and there'll be a point in time when we'll meld the two. These are the policies and the documents. They ultimately have, you know, one will drive the other, the view that a lot of the group and what I kind of support as well, or believe in as well, is a lot of these policies have to be discussed and decided on to determine how, you know, how the investments are made on the expenditure plan. So when Ben lists these discussion topics up there, you'll see that the transportation expenditure plan itself is listed at the bottom, and that was deliberate. We need to work through some of these questions. Some of those, so far I've heard, we're willing to talk about everything. We're going to get to a point, probably on some of these, well, we're not going to rehash that, or we need to make decisions a certain way. But we get through some of those, and we can really look at what the regional committee's proposed on the investments and, you know, tinker with those a little bit, or find that we're at a point where the policies and investments are compatible.
Well, again, I just, you know, I heard a lot of concern coming out of my colleagues' voices there in terms of what's not here. And I don't think that it was anticipated that it should be here tonight. I think there's a lot of stuff that's going to come from us that you got to go do a lot of work on. And so I, you know, I think you've done an outstanding job, and that this is a good process, but the answers aren't here tonight. And it's going to take that, you know, the next set of meetings to start getting to those answers, so... So.
Was there another comment?
Ben, hang on a second.
I don't think David was done yet.
Thank you. Let, yeah, let me, let me sort of try to augment part of that because I think there was, wow. Let me, let me sort of do it this way. I want to make sure that my, my initial component was, was well enough understood. There, there's a lot in the documents that we have that I agree with. There's also a lot that I disagree with. There's some assumptions that are built into it that I think are terribly flawed. And, and so even starting with the document as the framework for discussion, you know, may or may not be a good idea, but I think we have to get to a place, at least it seems to me we have to get to a place, where we've at least identified the components of this that we agree are the actual problem statement. Because otherwise, we're solving for something that we haven't pinpointed yet. So I don't know how to, I, I, my brain just doesn't work that way. I just be really honest about it. Because if I don't know what I'm solving for, I don't know how to create a vision. I don't know how to be creative. I don't know how to really work through what's, what, what are things that can be reasonably accomplished within the framework that we're trying to do here? And it isn't that I think staff has done a bad job of that or anything else. I think this, this group has to decide what parts of the, the document that documents, plural, that have been provided to us plus anything that hasn't yet actually form the foundation for the problem statement and therefore give us the, the, the box of solutions that are possible for sales tax measure. I, I, I'm not trying to be overly simplistic, but I'm, literally, it's just my brain doesn't work this way. I don't know how to, I don't know how to go past that first slip of paper, like, that says clarify and explain, and get to areas of agreement when I don't even really understand what the landscape is that we're, we're trying to do.
And you can't because if you're talking at the level of what the problem is and other people are talking at the level of what the solution is and other people are talking about what the implementation is.
Yes.
You're never going to get.
That's a better way of saying what I was trying to say.
Okay, I want to keep us moving. I want to keep us moving. Another comment on this, maybe then we'll move on to these two more comments and then we'll move on. Go ahead.
Well, you know, while I certainly understand and respect my, my colleagues' viewpoints about coming from diverse areas of the county with unique problems in each area, I just want to say that, that I have a great deal of sympathy with the presentation made by the, by Joel and the coalition. I, I, I think they're on the right track. And I think that, you know, I've heard several people talk about we did this last time, we did that last time. And, you know, I mean, last time was last time. And, you know, we're in a, we're in a new world now. And I think we, I'm hoping that we can move to something that's truly transformational, that it, that it is not short-sighted, but instead it's, it's visionary. And I think they're on the right track to that. You know, I heard Janet say something about, about, you know, what she's worried about is how do we get to the store to buy a, buy a carton of milk? And, you know, where I live, you walk to the store, get your carton of milk, you know? You don't have to wait for a bus. You just walk down there and get it. And I think that that's because I live in an area that's dense enough to support two local markets within a quarter of a mile of where I live. And I think that's, you know, that's a model that, that we should aspire to. You know, rather than trying to figure out how are we going to set up a, a transportation system that's going to get me from my house to the grocery store to get that milk? Think about how are we going to get the grocery store closer to my house so I don't have to have a transportation system? And I think that, you know, another underlying challenge in here that, that sooner or later, I, I think you have to come to grips with is some kind of, is building some kind of incentives for people to live where they work. And, you know, there's several different ways of doing that. Right now, one way it works pretty well is you just make it too painful for them not to live near where they work. And, you know, sooner or later, they just give up and say, you know, I'm going to move closer to where I work or I'm going to work closer to where, where I live. But, but I think there's something that could be built into the system that would, that would create economic incentives and other things to, you know, to make that work, along with looking at building incentives and for people to take public transportation instead of driving their, their, their car to work. And I think at the end of the day that, and I, I realize I'm probably in the minority on this, but, but I think at the end of the day, instead of looking at, well, how can we compromise so everybody's happy and we can get those two-thirds votes and, and do this? I would hope that maybe we would find the, the best long-term visionary solution. And then we would work on trying to change the message so that we bring people along to appreciate it. And one of the reasons I feel this way is less than a month ago, I spent two weeks in Paris at the climate talks. And although I was not one of the negotiators sitting high up there on the dais, I, I was, I had access to the hall. I watched all this happen. I watched history being made. And, and I watched the situation where a lot of people, a lot of countries, even the United States, came in there very skeptical about what they could accomplish. And at the end of the day, they adopted an agreement that was sort of beyond everybody's expectations. I think everybody surprised themselves on, on how far they were able to move the ball. And I, I found it to be a, really, for me, a life-changing experience. And I think an example of how, of how we can put short-term concerns behind us and really look at what we, you know, what we have to do to make this a better world and, and do it. And the other message I brought back is that there were about, I was one of about 400 mayors worldwide that, who was taking part in some way in that, in that conference. And there were only three of us from California, Eric Garcetti and Libby Schaaf and me. But, but we, we spent a lot of time talking for mayors from around the world. And I'm talking about mayors from the great cities of the world, you know, as well as some podunk places. And the message, the message that, that, you know, was given over and over again is, look, there's, an agreement's going to be made among nations. But at the end of the day, it's going to be, it's going to be you mayors who are going to make this work, you know? This, the kind of changes that have to be made in the world are going to be made primarily in urban areas. And they're going to be made by cities and counties and states. And that, and at the end of the day, that's where the rubber hits the, the road. And so I came back saying, okay, I'm a mayor. I'm going to find a way to do my part and make this work. And I think that, I think the kind of vision that Joel and the coalition have put together, I, I think they're on the right track. And I just wanted to know that I'm, I'm in their court. I, I support everything I've heard and, and I'll, I'll be there. I don't know if we're going to be able to, you know, put it together, but, but I'm, I'm here for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to make this comment under additional topics, but David has raised it and at least four other people here raised it. I want to call everybody's attention to the Sierra Club letter that was distributed at the last meeting because that letter attempts to do exactly what David was talking about. Lay out the problem, talk about what success was, and talk about what various new pieces of state legislation that have passed since Mayor J, Measure J, mean, mean for the development of a new TEP. And so that, it, Joel mentioned it and it, and it is, it was part of the letter, but the letter got fairly quickly got into details, whereas the Sierra Club letter is all very, very high-level. This is what we're trying to accomplish. And I, I agree with David. I think there needs to be some agreement on that before we get into the details of how we accomplish it.
Very good. Over here and then.
New topic.
Good.
Are we moving on to additional topic?
Excellent, that's segue.
I, I was going to say maybe I'm, I'm hearing a little bit. It, it would seem that we need to get some baseline information. You know, a new transportation measure, you know, do we all agree it's got to meet SB 375, AB 32? We ought to, we ought to have that as a checklist. Every item that we do on there, is it helping meet that? Because that's a state law or state laws. Other recognition, you know, we don't talk about it. We see all of these things. We have urban growth boundaries. We know that all growth for the next 30 years can be accommodated within the urban growth boundary. No question. The late John Chapman, Jeremy from Greenbelt Alliance did a presentation. They did an in-depth study through the Bay Area to prove that. And we know in our own general plans, we do our housing elements, we know that we can do that. But here's the reality. Every year, we need to build a city the size of Pinole or Maraga or Arrena. It's a 16, 18,000-person net gain. Now, that model used to be, and this is where we ought to have some statistics. It used to be, we made an assumption there were 2.8 people per household. That's not true anymore. Starting in '08, when the economy went different, we all lived differently. You can look in South, particularly San Ramon, for example, it's probably 4.8 people per household, maybe five. You're seeing Conquer, its per capita has went up. But the fact is, is we, we have to accommodate and we ought to have those statistics. So if we're adding 16,000 people a year, over 30 years, we're going to add 400-plus thousand. That's quantifiable. And, and we either acknowledge that, whether we be an environmentalist or not, that's just real. Unless we're going to take fluoride out and substitute it with birth control, we're going to get it. Right? I mean, just to be honest.
Advocating a one-shot.
Right. But I'm not advocating it. My point is, is that I think we need, we need on our list some of that baseline information. And as we look at an idea, whether it be a policy decision, does it meet those basic things? And we ought to have on that checklist our current policies. I think that's what David was saying. Here's our current policies. Are we going to change that? If so, why? What do we get for it? How does this project line up with that? And then that will help us go through a vetting process. And then I think what we've seen from the coalition, they want to change some of those. You know, that's going to be the hard part. And, and I think we ought to be honest and transparent to everybody. By changing that, is it part of our transportation multimodal system? Is it something that's outside of that? And is it trying to accomplish a different task? And honestly evaluate it. Does it meet that criteria? Because ultimately, it gets down to people who don't care about all these details. They want to know if they can get to work and go get that, that carton of milk. And are they going to get their kids on, pick them up on time when they're, when they're headed home? And we need to be able to ultimately take this complex political discussion and get it down to something simple. So I would hope, I would ask staff to be able to come back with a really good checklist of the values of the things that we already have, line those up with the things that are being suggested, where they line up. If it's a new one, let's go through that. Are we going to, are we going to debate it? Which we should, have a good, robust discussion. And are we denying the fact is, is we're going to have growth? And it's not growth-inducing. It's not a developer. It's the reality, we're going to expand. And how are we going to deal with it? Because we, sitting up here, have an absolute moral obligation to deal with it. We can't take the ostrich approach. So can't stick our head in the sand. We have to deal with it. So I think that would help us start that discussion and get a good checklist going. So.
Great. How about other, other topics or areas?
I'm going to follow up on Noel a little bit more. I'm going to say we're, I'd like to see a little more in depth of where that growth is going to occur. Even though it may be all within the boundaries, I can guarantee you people are going to be looking for the cheapest land they can to develop. And that cheapest land for, as we know, is in Eastern Contra Costa. So a, as we grow out in Eastern Contra Costa County, we can't, we can't always go west with all of our problems and with all of our issues and all of our commutes. Hitting on Highway 4 is the only way out of town and the only way on Highway 4 is west. So we have to, so we have to be able to look at how can we expand these, how can job opportunities that may be eastbound? And so we can't. So we have to be able to, to, to look at more of a, a robust system of getting in and out of Eastern Contra Costa because right now it is a cul-de-sac and there's a one-way in, one-way out. And the further east you go, the more difficult it is to get out. So I, I, I think there's need to be a little bit more study on, on, on where that growth will occur, what the impact of that growth will be and how are we going to address those issues before we get another Highway 4 again and before it becomes the 10th worst commute in the country again? And as far as technology, I mean, we've all talked about it, but I'd like to see, make sure it gets on there. And as far as milk being delivered, Amazon's going to take care of that with drones in a few years. And you'll just call on Amazon and that milk will be on your porch in 15, 20 minutes. And you won't have to worry about going two and three. It might be dropped from 10 feet. Yes. But with, I, I think we're, we're on the, on the edge of a revolution in, in transportation and how we, and how we move around in cars themselves and how they transform. That transformation is, is quickly coming. Electric cars will be no longer the, the unusual. They will probably be, be the norm as we move forward in this. So I think technology needs to be placed. And we need to be able, far off into the future, as we look into the future, how are we going to build into our roadways the necessary infrastructure to make sure that all that gets accounted for? All the, for the connected and autonomous vehicles be able to communicate and talk? There's going to be, have to be a hefty investment in the infrastructure and our roadway systems in order to make that work correctly. And, and so I think we need to have that on the list and to make sure that we don't, we don't get 10 years out and see where this, this revolution is happening faster than we are and that we can't accommodate it and we can't work with it.
Great. Other areas of agreement?
Yeah, mine's a little bit different. I, I've been listening and kind of watching the clock to see how we're evolving towards what is going to be a solution eventually. I believe the process, which was, I think, the first thing that was stated tonight, will work just as we're doing tonight. People that are concerned, that are interested, speak. We're trying to get our ideas down on the table. It's just, as you can see, a very long and evolved, involved process. And I'm asking this committee, what are we going to do from here? Is this working? Because we're been at this over two hours and we're kind of sneaking into number two. The people that are out here can look at the others that don't have it. They've got their own ideas. I mean, is this a point to determine what we're going to do for future meetings and how we're going to do it? Because I don't think it's, to do four hours, you can extrapolate, is not really the way I think this is intended to work.
Well, Julie, to follow up on that, I heard Ross say that the next E-PAC meeting is at the end of the month and we're going to meet again in two weeks. So along with that, I'd, I'd rather E-PAC meet. I, I still think we should meet. But I, I agree with David. We've got to determine what the problem is. And as much as, as the, the, the document is very inclusive, I'm hearing really sort of four things, maybe three, that where I see as areas of agreement. Mobility management, more public transit, meaning buses. That could be Bart, that could be other modes. And it has to be affordable, so you could put those two together. And improve trails for walking and biking. If we, and if we do that and more, or whatever we determine to do, the jobs follow. People need to choose, as one of my colleagues said, where you choose. Tom said it, make it more painful. I'm not suggesting we make it more painful. But, you know, you do have to make some decisions about where you live and that involves your economic status and where you work. But as I was telling some other groups, we're not here to solve the problems of society. We've got to decide, we're a transportation agency. I think Noel brought this up earlier. And I like what he was saying for staff to whatever. And it goes to my earlier thing on clarification is, is, I'm not sure. We, we need to solve a problem or address a problem. I don't know if we're going to solve it all, address a problem. But some of these things in here fall under other ways of dealing with it. They're not, in my opinion, transportation-related. And what, and I say that in the, in the context of going out for Bill and Eric and whoever else to poll people. Somebody else said it. They're not going to get into all these details. else to poll people, somebody else said it, they're not going to get into all these details. They don't care. They want to get from here to there, and, and they want to figure out, maybe it was Julie who said it. And that's the only way we're going to be able to sell it, in my opinion. I know Mayor Butt has a different perspective on that, but dealing with, I just don't see us getting there with that process. I see it, us getting there with a process of telling the public what we think, have heard from them, what their problems are, and this is how we think these dollars should be spent. Do you agree with us or not?
Okay, so I don't know if maybe you guys want to respond a little bit to that, but now we're talking a little bit about the messaging associated with.
Well, no, not really. You've got to have a problem, say. You've got to have, understand what the concern is before you can talk about the messaging. I'm putting, we've got to get this together before we can do the messaging.
Okay, okay. So the problem.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment in general, I think, on this, on the dialogue. First of all, I think the dialogue tonight's been good, and it's been helpful. Over the last year with EPAC and the RTPCs and everything else, we're getting a lot of information. We've gotten polls and everything else. It's important, as what I heard tonight, well, first of all, I wanted to note that EPAC, a majority, a good majority or a good number of the core EPAC membership is represented in this white paper. So they are engaged, and we are going to vet any final recommendations through them before we give them to you, or present it to you in terms of a staff recommendation. But what I'm hearing tonight is, you know, some questions about some of the proposals and details. And so what it, what has become real clear is that we, as staff and the consultant team, have to present to you the rationale behind any proposed changes, and the why, and how that relates to, you know, what we've been doing, why, why what we're doing isn't working or not working. So this has all been very helpful, and, you know, recognizing the local elements, recognizing the regional differences. You know, through all this discussion, in my mind, it's all been positive, and it's, and it's giving us the kind of information. I would say this dialogue needs to continue. And, you know, as we, and we can get in future meetings, in effect, challenged with some ideas and thoughts that we're, we're thinking about, not a proposal, but a, but an area. You know, I made the comment at the beginning, I think the idea of the growth management program evolving a bit is good. Now, the details of what that means is to be determined, and you may or may not ultimately agree with a proposal. But I think it's, all of this, to me, has just given us information to, to develop some thoughts and processes, the things that we didn't have in the past. The environment that we're working in, all the, all the comments have been very helpful, so I, I think it's positive. It will be vetted by a lot of folks before it comes back here with a final recommendation and a package. And you'll have ample opportunity to say, we overstretched, or we didn't go far enough, or we forgot the projects we're trying, you know, it didn't meet the definition of the need. We've talked about that in the past, and we certainly need to bring that in and remind everybody of what we're trying to do. But the problems are there, and we know what they are.
Okay. We got about maybe 10, 10 minutes, 15 minutes to finish up here. We have touched on some of the other things. Tom, I'll call on you in just a second, but I want to make sure that if there's other people who have comments about these areas of agreement, or areas where we need more discussions, get an opportunity to do it. So maybe Tom first, and then, and then Gail.
And I have my line.
Okay.
Gail hasn't spoken yet. That's all right. You said first, Tom.
Who's on?
Tom?
I'll be quick.
Then Gail.
So, you know, I've heard several people talk about, you know, what's the problem? Let's define the problem. And then I've heard some other people talk about, you know, we're really here to solve transportation problems, we're not here to solve, you know, other kind of problems. And I, I think that is the problem. I think that, that, you know, we may be a transportation agency, but I think trying to put this in a box, and, and look at it as a transportation problem is, is really self-defeating. You know, I don't think, I don't think we have a transportation problem. I think we've got a quality of life problem, we've got an economic problem, we've got a, we've got a climate change problem, we've got a, we've got a, a planning problem, you know, we've got, we've got problems that transcend transportation. And, and transportation is a piece of solving some of those problems. But if you look at it as being the only thing we're going to focus on, I don't think you're going to get there. You're not, you're not going to, you're not going to solve the problem.
Okay. Good, Gail.
I want to talk to the areas of agreement with the coalition's paper. And certainly, the focus on transit is my area of agreement. Noel said that we don't have a workable transportation system, meaning the public transit, like Tri Delta, CCTA, and Westcat. And one of the reasons for that is because we're asking it to do all things for all people. We're asking it to take Janet to the store for milk, and we're asking it to take the commuter in a fast way, which it can't do, to BART. And so unquestionably, they need more resources. I don't think that we need 15-minute service throughout the entire county, though. It's unsustainable, we don't have the density for that. So it has to be focused in certain areas, and, and we should be doing that to get people where they need to go. We need, in terms of BART's needs, we need transit feeders, because as you all know, we have no parking. And to build parking costs $50,000 for one space in a structure. So it's a very expensive proposition. So having transit feeders would be a great, transit feeders that work, that are fast, would really help, be helpful to BART. We need it to run later, because people don't end their lives at 8:00 p.m. So it's not workable unless it runs later. Somebody brought up transit priority signalization. That would help transit a lot also. And the rapid buses in certain places, the BRTs. And I'm glad that Janet brought up BART, per se, because I want to remind you that BART is also thinking of doing its own measure. Like you, we haven't decided on it. But it's going to be a fix-it-first measure. We're going to be, under the proposal right now that we're discussing, we're going to replace all the 44-year-old track that's there. You may know that BART has a lot of problems because of track problems, because of equipment on the cars. So we're replacing that, and we are putting, we are planning to put in a new train control system, which means that we can run the trains closer together than we can now, which means that we'll have a 25% increased capacity in Contra Costa County because of that. But the one thing I said before, and have to remind you, is that we are not allowed under law to buy new cars with it. So all this idea of getting people to BART, and, and having people in PDAs, and, you know, having the density and focus, if they can't get on the train, the whole plan falls apart. So I would say that, I still advocate that we complement each other. BART's fix-it-first, and this agency's focus on buying some new BART cars. And by the way, we are going out to the other counties, our general manager has a meeting set up with CCTA staff, with San Francisco staff, CMA, and Alameda County CMA, to say that this is a regional issue, and everybody needs to play its part. Because all this focus on transit won't work. 70% of the people who take transit in Contra Costa County take BART. And we can't fit any more of them on there. So we do need new cars to go along with our plan. And so, and the other thing that I agree with the coalition on is this idea of having this incentivizing infill, particularly an innovative TOD fund, similar to the one Bay Area grant. The reason for that is we built a lot of these TODs with redevelopment money. It doesn't exist anymore. So now we have to rely on the private sector, and it's very difficult to build at a BART station with a city telling you one thing and BART telling you another thing. So we need to have some incentives for the private sector to be able to do that.
Okay, I was just going to try to get you out of here at nine o'clock, so I think we've gotten a terrific amount of input and feedback. We do want to talk about the issues that you want to see addressed in subsequent meetings. Certainly, some of the background information about the problem statement is, is information? I'm sorry?
What we said is what we want.
What we want.
Right.
And I just want one minute. I think it'll say some of what you're going to be saying, but I'd like to have that minute. I think this is a good process. I think there's a lot of questions out there, and that's what we were looking for tonight, that you all were looking for tonight, was to get those questions out there, and to be able to get back to people with those answers, or to this group with those answers, because I think that our need is consistent in terms of answering those questions. But I would hope that one of the things that you would do is to check with the individual that has imposed the question, to make sure that it's clearly clarified, and that when we bring it back, that the answer is not one that will be questionable by at least that individual that had originally imposed it. And I do want to say this, because I think that the only thing that's changing momentarily is technology. And we need to make sure that we tie technology into our system. Because if not, the moment we build it, we'll be behind it. So we, we need to make sure that where there is other counties or states that are doing things differently and using technology, that we are checking in with them. I know it's difficult in terms of the timing that we have, but we have to tie it in. I think that will also be a, a very appealing sell to our constituencies.
Okay.
I'm finished. I won't say anymore.
Technology goes on the list.
Yes.
So other items or themes that came out of tonight, I mentioned a few. And other things, particularly, other things you want to talk about at, at subsequent meetings, that you want to be the, the subject of agenda items? Again, we talked about technology, we talked about a number of areas.
I think it's a one meeting at a time.
I do, too.
Look at the subsequent meetings, I'll look at the next meeting.
Yeah. I think, I'd like to add one thing to what Federal said, because I think it's kind of an important component, which is, we also have to, to look at the breadth of technologies, plural. Right? There's the technology stuff with respect to the highways and freeways that we've already been working on with the connected vehicles and all that. There's also technologies around rapid transit by whatever name or form, and how you move people from congested roadways to systems like BART. Right? With a recognition and understanding that BART is not like the subway system in Paris, or Washington DC, or New York, or a dozen other cities or more around the world. It's really a regional system that can't function as a subway system. It does for four stations in San Francisco, and it does for three stations in West County.
And it does in Berkeley.
That's three stations in West County. That's what I mean.
That's not in West County.
All right. Forgive me, I was, it's west of here, so it's West County to me, but okay. Fine. But, but fundamentally, for part of what we're talking about, which is the disconnect between jobs and housing, and, and those sorts of things, it doesn't solve the problem in East County. It doesn't solve the problem very well in Central County, because it can't function as a subway system. So part of the technology solution has to be the feeders to that system. So we can get 25 more percent more capacity on BART, which is great, love the idea, but how you get people there fast enough, through local streets, through, through regional-serving streets, without investing in technology that makes that, that happen? Some of it was talked about earlier, right? Something that allows for the signals to, to stay green when there's a bus approaching, that's the, some of that's explorational, some of it's aspirational. There are other places in the world where they're looking at technologies that are different than what we've looked at, but we have to incorporate all of that, I think, in, in terms of where we make investments, and not, not stay too focused on sort of the small bubble of what we know now. And, and I'll put a shameless plug in for the guy over there who's been really quiet with the green tie. There's nobody better on the planet to help us with that part of it, because the guy's all over the world looking at this stuff. And, and I think, again, fundamentally, I think we need to be broader in vision when we talk about technologies, so that we're not just too narrowly focused. So sorry for embarrassing you, Randy, but at some point, we're going to draw out of you, you know, help us identify where, where you and the rest of the staff think from a technology standpoint, we should be investing to get the most out of the transportation system. And it's got to be bigger topics, bigger ideas. That's, that's it.
Okay, maybe I can, maybe I can just highlight some of the key themes that have come up tonight, and we're going to be responding to those. And then I want to give a chance for Ross and Julie to close and wrap up. But just to highlight what we heard, it's important to understand what's not working. It's important to respond to the questions and have a process to do that. I think that's come up a number of times in a number of instances. Recognize the unique differences between the regions, and how important it is that one size doesn't fit all, and they're not unique. Recognize the difference between local versus regional mobility, and the whole issue of getting a bottle of milk to being a commuter and, and having to get to that location. There was, again, a suggestion of process clarification, and, and we will do whatever we can to try to make that clear. Again, go respond, go back and respond to the comments. There was a suggestion that some of the assumptions that were suggested, or the assumptions behind some of the things stated in the presentations weren't accurate, and we want to find out what those are, so we can make them accurate. We need baseline information. That's an important, basic thing that we need to do, and I think we have a lot of that information. It's about packaging it properly. Let's see, mobility, we talked about mobility management, more transit, affordable trails and walking bikeway, and walk, and bikeways. So different areas that are particularly important. And then there were a couple of folks who suggested that the activities that are part of the TEP are not necessarily appropriate to be part of the, of the TEP, that those, those types of problems needed to be solved in, in other ways. And so we'll have to spend some time talking about that, where it's appropriate, where it's, where it's not, and when it's not. Rationale needs to be delivered for the particular projects and for what we're suggesting. And then we talked about transit a lot, and its shortcomings, the expectations that people have for it, the cost associated with it, the expectation that it's going to be able to do short hauls or long hauls, and what the reality is of what it can do and its expense. There was more discussion about the difference between regional and, and local travel. And then certainly, technology came up as a, as an important theme that we need to integrate into any TEP that we put together. Is there any other key things that I left, left out? I think I have. The transit feeder systems, yeah, that came up. So how BART works depends on how effective you can be in getting people to BART. So you want to go ahead and wrap up?
I will do that. I know that, I think Dawn and I are the only ones who have not spoken at all tonight, and, and we'll get our opportunity when the time comes. I think one of my observations this evening, and one of our goals this evening, was that we were trying to get consensus from everybody. One of the things that we have to be agreed on is we're going to continue to communicate with our city councils, with our citizens, with our RTPCs, and we're going to make sure that they understand that this is an ongoing discussion, and we want them to give us feedback. There will be a meeting summary put together tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow morning, because we all know we have mayor's conference tomorrow night. And many of us have other meetings where we can share the information about what we're discussing. It's going to be a little bit of making hash out of what we talked about tonight, because we're sort of all over the map. And I understand, as electeds, that's a bit of a frustrating scenario. So I, I hear that, but we will have a meeting summary with some bullet points. One of the things that we were discussing, I was discussing with some of the staff before this meeting, is what format should minutes take? And one of our thoughts was to just make that bullet points of the discussion, and to not try to come to conclusions, because we're not forming conclusions right now. We're raising issues that need to be talked about. And so that's really important. I was glad to see a few of our alternates in the room tonight, because that's part of that communication process. And we are going to be doing, after every meeting, we're going to be doing an email with that summary of the meetings, so that it goes out basically to all of the electeds, but we all know that they don't all read them. So that's why we want you to carry it with you.
Speak for yourself.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, we think this is fascinating. Some of my colleagues on my council could care less. So unless I ram it down their throat, they're not going to listen. So I'll just speak for my own council. But truly, that, you know, and everybody misses things once in a while. So I think that's really important, that we will distribute that as broadly as we can, and continue to do the outreach. It'll go to the EPAC members, it'll go beyond that. It'll go to the E-PAC members, it'll go beyond that. One of the things on a personal level I will say is I think what I sensed from my colleagues tonight is that there needs to be a little more structure to the discussion, a little more focused discussion. I think Noel suggested, I, I'm not gonna make sure I attribute these correctly because there were lots of ideas thrown out, was that we maybe take what we have and compare what some of the ideas are so we can use those things as targeted discussion points because otherwise we're all over the map. And, and those of us who are a little bit obsessive like to keep things in order, so at least no.
I didn't realize you said that.
I looked about the entire room here. So our, our goals are, are going to be determined upon what our vision statement turns out to be. And that may be one of our very first things that we have to nail down. And, and I'm gonna look to our consultants, our staff, our facilitators to help us come up with a process to getting there expediently and efficiently. So I think, I think they've got their work cut out for them in the next two weeks. I have had a request from our vice chair, Dave Hudson, that he would like an agenda item on the next agenda to, he has suggested that there should be a separate chair for these meetings, separate from the authority meetings. And he has nominated Don Tatson to chair those TEP meetings through the month of July. I don't want discussion tonight, I'm just telling you that that will be an agenda item on our next meeting at the vice chair's request. And so I think rather than discussing or putting any decisions or anything out there, I think we, we will leave it at that and we'll have that discussion at the, at the full authority meeting, which my understanding is will be before the actual TEP meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay, so, and then we will post the TEP meeting to try to avoid what we had this evening. We're gonna try and guess how long the authority meeting will be and try to post it so that it may be a little quicker and we don't have a 20, 30-minute gap in between. I understand, I understand, I understand, no. And, and I'll just say, at MTC, we post meetings for five minutes apart so that if it's a slam dunk meeting and somebody has to wait a little while, that's better than everybody twiddling their thumbs for 30 minutes and possibly losing our quorum and things like that. So those are my wrap-up comments. I wanna thank all the presenters. Joel, you did a great job, thank you. We'll, we'll be discussing all of these points a whole lot more. And thank you to everybody for your interest, stay interested and, and drive safely getting home and enjoy the rain. Thank you.
Oh, almost made it.